Good evening, let's call the May 15th Board Meeting to order. Mr. Renner is out this week. If you'll please stand and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for taking the time to join us as the school year is winding down. I'm going to change the order a little bit on the special recognitions because the Hillcrest, I mean, sorry, the Kickapoo students and staff need to be at the Honors Assembly shortly. So, let's go to, first hear about the Kickapoo Lunar Team.
Good evening, Dr. Prater, members of the Board. It is again my pleasure to be standing in front of you for some celebrations this evening. I'd like to start this evening's celebration with a title. I know we all like to do research and read different items. Stratified ejecta boulders as indicators of layered plutons on the lunar near side. Did you read that? I've been doing some studying on that. That is the title of the research that Mr. Snyder and his group of lunar experts have been working on. I'm really going to kind of turn it over to them because I couldn't do it justice. And I know that Mr. Snyder will. On the level of research that this is and the impact it's making, really at a global level. So, fantastic work coming up here for you. Mr. Snyder.
Again, thank you. The biggest thing about this is, yes, it is making a global impact. Right now, I just got the email from our scientists down at the Lunar and Planetary Institute. These students are now published authors. So, they are, they've got a, they have a published journal article that is being submitted. She is actually going to present it at a lunar conference in Montana. And then, we of course are going out to Ames again this year, where we are the defending and now current national champions again. So, we've won twice. And they're going to be presenting that research that you've heard, stratified ejecta boulders. The thing about this is, it is, as per our mentor, she said that if you want to get a PhD off of this, this is no problem. She goes, "This was PhD level work." So, these students are doing some really, really amazing stuff. They worked exceptionally hard, exceptionally long hours, for just being with me. And one little credit. But, they really have done amazing things. And just to do something like this, it has made an impact on the lunar research community. Mr. Zenetti out of Wash U, kind of, we took some of his research. And that unfortunately was the gentleman we proved wrong. And so, we proved his theory wrong. And he did send me an email and he said, "Bravo." He says, "That was some," he goes, "You have a really good program." And nationally, other schools are modeling after Kickapoo because we are now called a lunar and Mars program. So, it's truly, it's very humbling, but these students are truly, truly amazing. This is Austin Beeson, Tori Wilson, and Abby Delauter. For three students to do this amount of work and this level of work is truly, truly amazing. So, you should be very proud of them. They have represented Kickapoo as well as Springfield Public Schools very, very well. So, and we will continue to do so. We're still in a competition out there, so.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Actually, if you, two ladies can come up here.
First of all, what was the first project? I mean, I know there's a title about this long, but what was that?
Okay, it's basically, what we've done is, with the, there's a camera, LROC NAC, Lunar Reconnaissance Orbiter Camera. So, it's like a satellite going around the moon that has a really good camera. You can see boulders that are 10 meters in size. Well, what they found was, this is brand new. They just found layered boulders on the surface of the moon. Well, layers in geology is an indication of sedimentary processes. You don't have those processes on the moon. So, there, Mr. Zenetti and several others came up with theories to possibly explain these layers. Well, what these students did was actually take that and say, "Well, wait a second." Read a ton of journal articles about what's some other theories. And then, we started doing observations, measurements. We did, we did such high-level measurements that it was like unbelievable. And we actually took all those theories and proved it wrong. And then, we came up with one that works here on Earth. And we applied it to, so, and whenever we did that, people, I was calling people, like, I mean, my phone is loaded from, I've called Hawaii, Virginia, Texas, all kinds of places. And they were like, "Really?" And it was, it was pretty cool. Pretty cool to see some jaws drop of people you call sir and doctor. So, it's really kind of neat. So, they explained the origins of layered boulders on the surface of the moon.
Thank you, I was curious.
Yeah, it was really neat, so, really cool. You have to step in, we'll show you.
Okay, I will.
And with our other team here, what was really nice about this was this was the first year of the Mars Exploration Student Data Team. They started a competition as well. Because on my recommendation, I'm pretty good friends with Mr. Brian Grigsby, who works with what is called CRISM, Compact Reconnaissance Imaging Spectrometer for Mars. And he, I basically told him, I said, "Look, students want competitions." So, between him, Johns Hopkins University, NASA, and several other universities, they started another, they started a Mars competition much like the lunar one. Well, I have Jordan Horner, or I told you I wasn't going to do that, Jordan Cloud, and Sarah Hickel, and I do have one more student, Raven Vialpanda, who's in Colorado right now, probably looking at rocks. What they did is, they looked at a place called Casma Boreal. And they started to come up with theories of the origins of geysers on Mars. And they don't work anything like Earth. And of course, we presented our research to a panel of judges. And then, from that, we were determined to be co-first-place teams. Really, really cool stuff. Actually, Jordan did get to speak with the whole, the head honcho, for lack of a better word, of Mars research. She was talking to him on his cellphone. And she got a step-by-step procedure because he was very impressed with some of the measurements that we were actually doing. So, again, with this group, they've really, since being as, it's a new program and it's a new competition, we set the bar. We set the bar for what other schools must reach to get up there. So, in June, I get to travel with these two young ladies to Flagstaff, Arizona, to present. And then, exactly one month later, I get to travel to Ames out at Mount View near San Francisco in California so that they can present their research as well at a scientific conference. So, they're competing against, well, last year, the girl who beat us was from MIT. They're the only high school students here. It's all college grad students. So, it's pretty, pretty intense, so.
Don't go away. Let me ask, let me ask the students, first, the moon team. What grade are you guys? Seniors, all three? And then, plans, we always love hearing plans for next year, so.
I'll be going to Western State College of Colorado.
Good.
I'm going to Missouri State for geology.
Good.
And I'm going to go down to Joplin and go to other Christian college.
I'm going to University of Missouri for geology as well.
Perfect. So, you guys have, looks like you've taken this interest and you're taking it a step forward. Very good, impressive. Any other questions for the?
How do you mentor the next group? Or do they mentor the?
The next group, what it is, is I kind of, it's like a selection. Kind of, I select students who I see as, like, I can use Sarah as an example. Someone who didn't have the confidence in science, but I just saw something. And I said, "Hey, why don't you do this?" So, I find students that don't have enough. Like, Austin was like, "Okay, I'm not, I can do more." I chose Austin, I chose these guys based on that. And Jordan the same way. And then, Sarah was, didn't have enough. And same with Raven. And I was like, "Didn't have the confidence." And I said, "You can do this. Just shut up and do it." And they listened. So, and they'll vouch, that's pretty much what it is. I just tell them to shut up and do it. So, and they're really, really good. They've done, they've put up with me, which deserves a pat on the back already.
I have just one quick question, maybe the lunar team, but you're welcome to answer. What motivated you to put in the number of hours and time and interest and passion into this program? So, any one of you can answer.
It's one reason I enjoy it.
Sebastian.
It's kind of an honor to be chosen to be on the lunar team or the Mars team. So, going along with that kind of thing is kind of a recognizable thing at school and kind of known for it. Like, I had people come up to me at school and go, "Oh, good job. You're published now." And just kind of, just out of action of knowing that we did really good work is kind of the motivator.
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's, like I said, we're starting to be recognized nationally. And that's, actually, the CRISM team has already said, you guys have a Mars program that other schools are starting to pattern after. They already see that. And being the, you know, second-year champions of this, we've got a big target on our back for next year. So, and I've already got students that are ready to accept that challenge. So, it's actually quite nice, so.
Thank you all very much. And go ahead, Ms. Traver.
Can you get the paper sent to Kathy so that she can? Is that something that could be sent to us?
Yeah, I can send you everything.
I'd certainly like to see.
Yeah, everything's right here. So, I, yeah, I can definitely send those on to you. Not a problem at all.
The other thing I thought was very important when you talked about this, the scientist at Wash U, you knocked his theory off and he sends you an email saying, "Bravo." I think that's so important that kids understand that's how science progresses, that people, scientists want to be proven wrong because that enhances the knowledge for everyone. I think it's an important point that our society does not understand very fully. So, that's very important.
Is that true for attorneys too?
No, you don't get the "bravo" when you, you get, you get, starts with a "B," but.
I see.
Yes, they are very aware. We discuss, this is stuff I always discuss in my classes. And whenever they're on this stage, at this, something at this level, I'm like, "This is pretty big." So, and not only do they get the good side, but they also, I've had to jump their butts a few times. And it's, it's good, they, you know, they relish it. She took a blunt one day. I told her her presentation was crap. And she took it as a challenge. And she came back the next day and just, just nailed it. And I was like, "There you go. That's what I expect." And it was amazing to see her step up. All of them, they all do that. I have to jump their butts every once in a while, so.
I think it works, obviously.
Well, thank you all very much. Congratulations to all of you and to Mr. Smith for giving you the way to do everything. And please don't speed going back across town, all right? Now, we get to hear about Josh Ruggles.
Thank you. The hits just keep coming this evening. And very fortunate to have the opportunity to celebrate a young man and his performance on a national level in archery. This is a relatively new program. It's young for our district. And it's working through one of our alternative sites, the Ames Program. And the connection that this has allowed these students to make, not only with what's going on with them educationally, but then with the district and the opportunity they've had to excel has been fantastic. And Josh has taken that, and again, taken it to a whole other level. So, I'm going to introduce Ms. Kathy Clark, who oversees our Ames Program, who's going to tell you a little bit more about what's going on. And we'll also introduce the coaches, Dawn Provance and Rhonda Weldon, as well as Liz Break, who has been, have been working with Josh over the last couple of years. So, Ms. Clark?
Thank you very much. Just so you know, Josh just turned 12 last week. So, he is a sixth grader. Josh has been in our alternative sites. He's been in the PALS program for a couple of years. And he came to us this year as a sixth grader. And he's doing well. He actually loves coming to school. And I think archery has something to do with that. Dawn Provance and Rhonda Weldon have been longtime employees. They came to me a couple of years ago, had heard about the National Archery and Schools Program through the Coordinator of Physical Education, said, "Not sure we want to do this." Went to the meeting and said, "Oh, my gosh, we have to do this. This is going to be one of the greatest things." And I was like, "Okay, I'm going to trust you." Liz Break was part of that. She's not here tonight, but they came and convinced me. And we met with the Missouri Conservation Department, got a grant, invested the money. We've been doing this three years now. The National Archery and Schools Program is 10 years old. We found that out at the national tournament because there were banners up all over. We just came back from the national tournament, and that was in Louisville. And Josh had a timed schedule. He shot at 3:15 on Friday. And I thought it was interesting. We wanted to go because we'd never seen it. And so, I took some pictures. And here's Josh. Here's another young man that's a little bit taller. And then, this fairly good-sized young lady, tall young lady, next to him. And they're shooting. And this is the neat thing about archery. You can be shooting next to anybody, any size or age. This young lady was a senior and a five-time state champ from Michigan. And she was shooting right next to Josh. This other young man was shooting and Josh. And Josh just did a great job, stood up there. And he improved his score. The possible score is 300. He shot a 278. It was out of 7,804 archers, he was number 423. So, I have a little certificate to award him and a patch. And I didn't want to get fingerprints on this, but a nice little plaque or picture of him at Nationals. So, we're really proud of him. He's done very well at Regionals. He's done very well at our state tournament that qualified him to go. He's the first Springfield Public School student to go to Nationals, and he won't be the last, okay? Do y'all have any questions or?
Questions for Josh?
Terrific.
How many, how many students do y'all have in the program now?
In Ames, we carry 40 to 42, 43. In the building, we do also allow our solution students to participate. And we run around 35, 40. It just depends on that time of year. And we do have some solution students. Josh was the only one that qualified. But we open it up. And we really hope that when he gets to be a high school student, that program's going to be growing and that he will be that maybe five-time state champion somewhere. So, we're really proud of him. And I really appreciate the time and effort that they all put in. And we have some grandparents and proud parents here. I don't know what Justin Harrell said to him at the beginning, but that was the biggest smile I've ever seen on Justin. So, we're trying to get that a little bit more.
Mr. Provance is far too young to be a longtime district employee, so. Yeah. Thank you all very much.
Ms. Clark, for the record, I informed Josh I was taking him deer hunting with me this year, so maybe this year I wouldn't miss. We do have one, one other celebration. Again, just an amazing situation, coming out of Ms. Heather Wetter's class out of Hillcrest High School, her art class. And Heather's here this evening, as well as the building principal, Mr. Jay Rush, and Jamie Blaine. And I'm going to let Ms. Wetter, Ms. Wetter talk to you about Jamie's accomplishment and the artwork that is now hanging up in Congress in the United States Capitol Building. So, Heather, if you'd step up.
Hello. I am Heather Wetter, otherwise known as Weeder. Okay, I'm a woman of many facets, I can, I can adjust. This is Jamie Blaine, my student. I have been very privileged to have her at Hillcrest High School for the last four years. She's an amazing person. We are lucky enough here at Springfield Public Schools to have very good support for the arts. And it's a very important thing to have a well-rounded individual. And this is one of the things that we can provide at Hillcrest that has really been growing quite nicely in the last eight years that I've been there. Our program has doubled in size since I've been there. But what that has done is that when I run into a rare angel like Jamie, we have a good program to help support those just magnificently natural talents that come across our table. And we're so lucky to have these young students and to be able to influence them and to be able to nurture them and to watch them grow. And I've been very fortunate with Jamie. Some of the things I would like to share with you about Jamie is that she's not very simply an artist. She's one of our valid Victorians this year. She won the Project 21 Video Scholarship. That's a nationwide scholarship for the Gambling Association. She did an absolutely magnificent job with that. She's a recipient of many other scholarships. She is very involved with the Science Olympiad, the History Day things. She's a very well-rounded individual. And that's the type of student that at Hillcrest, we're so proud of because that's our model student. And we have a lot of those students, but she is just absolutely exceptional. So, on top of that, then I have this wonderful person that walks in and loves art and has a passion for this and has taken the time to really nurture that. And she works day and night, literally. She will do all-nighters just to perfect something because she will not turn in something that is not her best, regardless of whether it is a piece of artwork, if it's a paper in English or anything else, which is why she is one of our valid Victorians as well. But on top of that, for all of you moms and dads out there, I'm sure you'll love this, she also brings in part of her own income because on top of that, she is an ice skating coach. She's taken ice skating for years, passed her exams to be a coach. And so, she also mentors young people in their love of their performance art. And you just don't find very many young people of her age that have that drive to excel at so many things. In the Congressional Art Competition, she represented Hillcrest High School in our Congressional District. And that's, all of the high schools are invited to participate. And that is in seven counties. And that includes Christian County, Polk County, a lot of different counties. And there's a lot of very strong schools in those counties because you've got Nixon, Ozark, that are just art powerhouses. Last year, she took second place, which I was so proud of her. But that wasn't good enough for Jamie. And she came to me this year and she said, "I want to win." And I saw that sparkle in her eye and I knew there was going to be no stopping her. And so, we went through a lot of discussion about, you know, what are we trying to do here? What are we looking for? And she has this wonderful sense of experimentation. And I've watched her grow immensely, just even over the last year. And so, when she started producing artwork and we started talking about what we needed to do for this, and then she came up with her piece, and I just, it wouldn't matter to me if it didn't win. I was so very, very proud of her. She just really did well. So, we went to the competition and she did place first. Now, what that means is that her artwork goes to hang in the Capitol Building for a year. Now, there's a piece of artwork from every Congressional District across the United States. And it's in this beautiful curved wall inside of the Capitol Building. Every person that walks by there, thousands of people this year, will get to see Jamie Blaine, her artwork, her representation of not only Hillcrest High School, Springfield Public Schools, and our Congressional District. And I'm so very, very proud of her. She's a little bit shy, believe it or not, even though she is a wonderful starlet in her own videos and whatnot. But I would ask her to come up and speak about her piece for just a moment and tell you her future plans.
Hi. My piece, I painted two macaw parrots. And I experimented with acrylic paint and spray paint, which no one's really done before, at least in this region. It's very exciting. The competition was really stiff and I'm really honored to have won this. As far as future plans are concerned, Dr. Domon convinced me to do one year at MSU. And then, I was one of 80 out of thousands to be accepted to Ringling's in Sarasota, Florida, their design and film program. And it's one of the top film programs in the nation. So, I'm very excited. And then, I plan on doing, studying abroad in London for a couple of years. So, that's that.
And as an example of her work, the parrot hanging right back there was our best of show from the All-City Art Show from the Springfield Art Museum. So, that is just a small example of her work. I beg your pardon.
Parents, who are parents? Yes.
Yes, Dr. Jim Blaine. And it looks like her older sister, but her mother, right there, Barbara. And very supportive parents, very good parents, very involved parents. And we're very lucky to have them as Hillcrest parents as well.
Thanks very much. Congratulations. Fortunately, we have to do business tonight. Are there any modifications of the agenda any board member needs to do? My report is fairly short. I was, at the first part of the Care to Learn Celebration this morning, Dr. Harrell and Dr. Ritter were also there. And it was nice to hear an update, a four-year update on the Care to Learn Fund and what it's done, not just for our district, but for multiple other districts around here. Very, very impressive work. And Maury Mecklen and Doug Pitt deserve congratulations for that. I think everybody on the board has received the proposed board meeting dates for next year. And if you do have any conflicts or any glaring overlaps that you see, let Ms. Luton know and we'll work on that. And I think you'll hear later on tonight, it's probably going to be imperative that we do have our budget work session on May 29th, which tentatively set at May 29th at 5:30. So, mark that down as well. And that's all I have. Dr. Ritter?
Couple of things, I was going to mention that as well, as far as Care to Learn. A hundred thousand contacts, just phenomenal feat. The trick there, I think, is to get the money from the donor to the student as fast as possible. Really, really critical. I want to announce administratively, as far as retirees this year. And I want to wish them well. And we had a little retiree, retiree reception before this for all staff. Nancy Break Johnson out of Fremont. Julie Steiger from Pleasantview. I just, I don't know what she's going to do with her energy, but anyway. And then, Jay Rush, the principal at Hillcrest. And then, of course, Anita Kissinger, who's with us tonight. And Virginia Crawford. So, I want to wish all of them well. We also had administrators receiving doctorates this year. And I thought I'd share that with the board as well. We have Shannon Smith, who just, I believe is just finishing up that. Brady Quirk, working in Special Ed. Susan Langston, who works with the International Baccalaureate Program. And then, Beth Engelhardt, who is the principal at Delaware, received doctorates this year. So, I thought I'd share that. Also, we have graduation next week, Monday and Tuesday. I thought I'd share some numbers with you as far as graduation. Central High School's going to have 275 graduates. Glendale, 334 graduates. Hillcrest will have 245 graduates. And then, Kickapoo, 386. And Parkview will have 311. And we're figuring that Bailey probably has over 40 graduates. And then, my understanding is, the Middle College is going to have 39 graduates tomorrow night. And so, that gives you a little bit of a feel. The total for the five schools is 1,551. And that's usually pretty close to the number of graduates we have every year. So, I thought I'd mention that, just to kind of remind you that you are on stage at different graduations next Monday and Tuesday. And looking forward to that, as well as the post-graduations. Wishing everybody a safe and exciting celebrative night. So, anyway, that's what I want to mention as well. Other than that, I can't believe, next Wednesday is the last day of school. It's the earliest December I can remember in a long time. As I mentioned last time, we have two days, two more days of summer break, even though we start much earlier next year. So, that's really an interesting thing to realize and understand. And hopefully, that message will get out to all the students out there claiming it's going to be a very short summer. But anyway, other than that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't believe we have any speakers tonight. Ms. Kissinger, Learning Model Update.
Good evening, Dr. Prater, board members, and Dr. Ritter. We're here tonight to provide an update to you on the Springfield Public Schools' learning model. And we're going to try to do that with three key purposes in mind. One is, you may remember at the March Board of Education meeting, we provided a brief update to you on progress on our deployment goals for the current school year. And we want to provide a final report on that tonight. Secondly, give you a preview of the professional learning plan for teachers for next school year. And then, I might say, the most exciting thing tonight about this report is that we have the pleasure of having some teachers and the principal of Jarrett Middle School here to share some of the excellent work that they're doing to integrate the learning model into a couple of initiatives that they have in their school. You may recall that Springfield, as a community, and Springfield Public Schools received a Kennedy Center Grant about a year and a half ago, the Any Given Child Initiative. And Jarrett's one of the schools that's really embraced the support of that program. And so, the arts integration that you're going to have the opportunity to learn a little bit about tonight, which is very exciting, is aligned with the learning model and supporting the learning model. which is very exciting, is aligned with the learning model and supporting the learning model. And then we'll end with an initiative that they have started this year. Their sixth-grade team of mastery learning in some exciting ways that they're meeting the individual needs of students and making sure every child has a learning and a steep learning curve for growth and at the same time integrating the SPS learning model. It's my pleasure to introduce our Director of Information Literacy, Dr. Robyn Hagerman, who's going to share with you an update on our progress on our key goals for the school year. Dr. Hagerman?
Thank you. I'd like to update you on our goals for this school year. It's very exciting to show these same four goals that we updated you on last time and to be able to check them off for you tonight. The first one is to create teacher and leader awareness through an all-staff training. We reported last time that we had completed that training with all teachers and site leaders. However, since that time, we have also expanded that training to include departments. We've talked many times that the learning model is just as important for the employees of our school district as it is for the students. And so we've created a special, a little shortened version of the learning model overview training for department members. And they have begun completing that. We gave them until the first day of next school to make it really convenient for those who meet at the beginning of the school year. So we're underway in that process. It's an online training. We're trying that out this time and it's working very, very well so far. We have it logged on the SPS homepage, so you're welcome to visit it anytime. And when you click on Learning Model Training for Departments, you will come to this screen. And if you click the first tab, you can find that 20-minute training that will give a great overview of the learning model for the adults in the system. The second tab is where they can complete a reflection form to tell us, you know, just give us some feedback on how that training worked for them. And then third, they can complete a verification so we know who has completed the training. The reflection was designed to mirror the reflection that we gave to staff and principals, or to teaching staff and principals, so that we can use that data combined. And it's my pleasure to give you some results. Only 291 people have taken it so far because remember, they do have until August 15th to complete it. But we'd like to show you what we have so far. Ninety-six percent said that it was organized and easy to follow. Ninety-seven percent completed that 20 minutes and felt like they already understood the four processes and how they work for their work. Ninety-four percent agreed that they were able to reflect on how the learning model relates to their department, which is really fantastic for an online 20-minute training that many of them are completing in isolation. And for the learning model itself, 95% understood the visual. Eighty-nine percent, after 20 minutes, could already explain it to someone in the community. 95% understand where it came from and why it's important. And 96% were engaged and attentive during that training. So we can check that one off. The next goal for this year was to complete the innovation configuration for the three capabilities that are in the model. And we have successfully completed that work. It's great, great work from teachers in our district who completed that document. And it is polished and ready to go and to be distributed to all teaching staff in August. We also made sure that we had an opportunity to test that innovation configuration in real classrooms with real teachers. And so we conducted some action research on that. And the results came back wonderfully and we used their feedback to update it. And they're very pleased and have given some great suggestions on how to train that IC for all staff. Finally, we supported librarians this spring with some additional professional learning so that they feel really comfortable and a little bit ahead of the curve. They've already been trained on the innovation configuration and are using it with their own practice and are ready to serve as a key resource with their teachers as soon as the learning model training starts for next year. So I'm very pleased to provide that final report on this year's goals. As you'll recall, we've used this graphic many times from Leader 21 in the work of Ken Kay. We did a lot of work this year to make sure that we're building professional capacity in supporting staff. We will continue with our deployment plans for 2012 through 2016 to further align our system, the processes that we have, the documents that we use, to make sure that we are well on that road to improvement and innovation. In 2012, we have a deployment plan that starts next fall and goes all the way through 2016 that has been very carefully thought out to make sure that we're including all aspects of our school system. The plan itself is divided into five strands that you can see in front of you. And what we think is most important to share with you tonight is the work that we're doing next year to train staff on the learning model and what that's going to look like for next year. So Kathy Gross, the Director of Professional Learning, will share that information with you now.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to explain to you the professional learning that's been designed for all sites for next school year regarding the learning model. As Robyn mentioned, everyone's had an introductory session this year, but we wanted to continue that learning next school year. And we've divided that into parts and that was intentional because what we know about professional learning is that it needs to be chunked in information with follow-up provided and collaborative work included. So Part One will be a two-hour training across the district and we're using a blended online learning method. So sites will be able to have the training provided so that at every site, there's consistency in the message for reviewing the model, its importance, and the three Cs will be covered. Everyone will be introduced to the innovation configuration that Robyn was just talking about that's been going through action research. And we're pleased to say that at the end of that, they'll be given the actual innovation configuration to actually apply in their own classrooms between Part One and Part Two. So there's some time intentionally between the two parts so that they can try out what they've been given and introduced to in Part One. Part Two is a one and a half blended training as well. And we will give them an opportunity to reflect on their use of their first experiences with the IC. We will also have an introduction from Dr. Matt Goodman about effect size. And we will review the four processes of the Springfield Public School learning model. That will set them up to make an informed choice about which of the four processes they would like to learn more about according to what they see as personal needs, their students' needs, and their school's focus. And so they'll be able to choose one of those four processes for the third part of their learning, which will be designed intentionally for collaborative learning. And they'll spend six one-hour chunks, learning going more deeply into one of the four processes. And they'll be doing that collaboratively. And we will be creating guides that will walk them through those six hours that will mirror our expectations of what we communicate during the SPLS sessions. So perhaps you saw on your board update last Friday, some explanation about the critical components of SPLS and the district expectations. And what our intention is, is that for people who maybe haven't tasted the success of those critical components in action as a collaborative team, by following the learning guide that we provide, regardless of which process they've chosen, they'll be able to experience that successfully with their colleagues and apply it meaningfully into their practice in their classrooms. I'm pleased to say that Parts One and Parts Two both offered choice in the area of when they would do that. And that was intentionally designed so that people at every site could give input into what they thought would work best at their school site. Because we know that the context of learning varies from site to site and it's very important that people have voice in that. And so we were able to think of a way with lots of options for people to choose from so that they feel comfortable in when they will be doing Part One and when they will be doing Part Two. Although we thought it was important for the message to be consistent across the board. The what wasn't optional, but the when was very much up to them. And then Part Three is, the choice is that they'll actually choose which process they're going to study more deeply. And we're excited about the opportunity for them to have voice in that. And I think that teachers, once they get into this process, will be inspired by their learning. And we know that success breeds success and that motivation, I think, will inspire them for more learning. And then finally, a celebration is that, I've mentioned, we're creating blended online learning for Parts One and Parts Two. And that is thanks to the Walmart Foundation funding that the learning model was presented. We're able to use those funds to have a more professionally-produced Part One and Part Two for next year. And we're excited, in the midst of designing that now. And we'll be excited for everybody to see what we've come up with. And we think that it's really going to guide and inspire more in-depth learning into the Springfield Public School learning model.
Thank you, Kathy. And you may remember in March, when we had the teachers that were here that talked to you a little bit about the development of the innovation configuration or rubric. And those were some of the teachers that were doing the action research. And we also had teacher focus groups in, three focus groups in, in January and February, that we reviewed this professional learning concept with and used their feedback to fine-tune that before we presented it to staff. I'm going to pause before we go to Jarrett Middle School and see what questions you might have about the first two purposes, either the report on this year's goals or the professional learning plan for the upcoming school year.
Questions from Ms. Kissinger?
I have a comment. I just have a comment that, I just think this is an exceptional way to implement this because the enormous task to implement something like this district-wide, unless you've been there and you've tried to do it, is just unbelievable. So the way you're breaking this down into the three sessions, the two hours, the hour and a half, and the six hours, is pretty amazing that I think that teachers will be able to have the time to grasp and to put this in place. And especially the time in between to collaborate and to talk about it and to think about it and reflect on it and then come back and say, "This worked, this didn't work." So, I mean, I think from the very beginning, because of all your in-depth planning, this is going to work. It's very exciting.
I would just like to add that really knowing that Common Core is coming in, what is it, 1314? 1415? 1415. This is pretty much what Common Core is. And it's kind of setting the stage, doing a great job of setting the stage for that. So I think we, as a district, are going to be very ready for Common Core. And Common Core is really a very, very critical approach to knowledge. And I think it's going to be something that's going to make us look really good. But also, it's going to help our students quite a bit, so.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter. Now it's my pleasure to introduce to you the principal of Jarrett Middle School. And she's going to introduce some of the teachers that are here and I know you're going to really enjoy listening to them. I want to introduce the teachers, anyway, by sharing with you something that I heard at the CCSO, which is the Council of Chief State School Officers Meeting. I had the pleasure of attending with the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Team. And the whole conference was about educator effectiveness. And we had the opportunity to hear from the National Teacher of the Year, who, by the way, is coming to Missouri to speak in the summer. So hopefully we'll have some opportunity for more of our staff to hear her. And she talked a lot about effective teaching and that some things we can measure that are effective in terms of teaching. But there are some things that are very difficult, if not impossible, to measure, but we know it makes an effective teacher. And the one that she really hit hard on was passion. And that passionate teachers really make a difference. And I know tonight, you're going to see the passion of the teachers that are at Jarrett Middle School and the amazing things that they are doing with arts integration. And I might also add that the passion of the principal makes a difference. And so you're going to have the opportunity, not only hear from passionate teachers, but a passionate principal that's doing some amazing things at Jarrett Middle School for students. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you the principal of Jarrett Middle School, Ms. Teresa Wise.
Good evening. Thanks for letting us come and have the opportunity to share what we're doing at Jarrett in regard to mastery and the arts integration. There've been many people that's been instrumental in making this happen. And I'd like to introduce a few if the back row would stand up first. They tried. We went front row, back row. That's the way it works here. Brittany Groves, she teaches mainly sixth-grade math. Next to her, we've got Liz Veely, she's our counselor. Next to her, Janice Hats, she is sixth grade social studies. And next to her is Anna King. She does mainly sixth-grade commarts. And then Karen Martin is our fabulous librarian. And then on the front row here, I've got Mrs. Beesmeyer and Mrs. King. And they're going to share a little bit about mastery learning in a little bit as I go through and tell you a little bit about the arts integration and what we're doing. First of all, our, sorry about that. Our journey started last summer with Dr. Pomperine. He was able to make it possible for a team of Jarrett staff to attend the Arts Integration Conference in Washington, DC, at the Kennedy Center through the Any Given Child Grant, as Anita talked about. And it was probably one of the best conferences I've ever been to. It was just really great. And we were able to bring back great ideas and start implementing that process through our whole faculty study groups. In addition to that, Dr. Pomperine's also made it available, a presenter to come in in February. They came in in February and talked, from the Kennedy Center, to a group of about 20 of our teachers on a Saturday, along with some Carver teachers. And then the same presenter's coming back June 4th, 5th, and 6th to present to us. And Parkview's also bringing about 12 teachers over. So we'll have about 20 or 25 teachers there also. And then we also get the privilege of being able to go back out to Washington, DC with another set of staff this summer at the end of June to even learn even more about arts integration. And I think the video that's coming up will explain it the best. This was developed by a lot of the people that are here. In fact, I think everybody that's here tonight developed this through our whole faculty study groups. We did a share-out and it really explains a little bit more about arts integration and how it affects our students at Jarrett, so.
Arts have always been an important part of classroom instruction. Teachers use them instinctively because they engage students and facilitate learning. Arts integration is an approach to teaching in which students construct and demonstrate understanding through an art form. Students engage in a creative process which connects an art form in another subject area and meets evolving objectives in both.
There are three types of arts in a school. You have arts curriculum, which are your fine arts classes such as art, music, and theater. You have another component called arts and happy enhancement, which is where you are, for example, in a math class, singing a song about long division to enhance the content that you're teaching. And a third type is arts integration, which is where you are taking material that you have taught your students and you are having them create an art form. Maybe you're having them write a script or maybe you're having them create their own song about content that you have taught. And it's ultimately supposed to help students retain their information better and feel like they took ownership in their learning.
When are you using the arts to enhance your lessons? And when are you integrating the arts into your lessons? First steps in using the arts are almost always arts enhancement. When you use the arts to help students with their learning, you are enhancing. You might have them sing a song from Schoolhouse Rock that is intended to help students remember the rock cycle or parts of speech. You might have students use a Reader's Theater script to help them with the concept of segregation. You might have students look at photographs taken of castles and weapons of the Middle Ages to begin a discussion of problems people at that time faced. So arts enhancement is using the arts to enrich the learning experience. It's a quick step from arts enhancement to arts integration. Arts integration demands that students not only acquire knowledge, but they develop the capacity to reflect on what they learned and use it to interpret and create works of art. That is important, so I'm going to repeat it. When students use what they learned to interpret and create a work of art, that is arts integration, sort of a show what you know using art. I want to give you an example of laying a foundation with arts enhancement and moving to arts integration. Mrs. King introduced Reader's Theater to her students and walked them through the process. She chose the script, assigned the parts, directed the gestures, practiced with students, and provided the evaluation. Mrs. King gradually released the responsibility to her students so they could move into arts integration. At that point, they assigned parts, chose the gestures, practiced, and provided the evaluation. Mrs. Jameson took it one step further into arts integration when she had her students write their own scripts about cheating or bullying. After they wrote the script, they had to assign the parts, practice, add their own gestures, and provide the evaluation. Students had to show what they learned, they had to interpret it, and then they had to create a work of art.
Springfield Public Schools has identified three capabilities important to the success of students. These capabilities are supported by arts integration. They include communication, collaboration, and critical thinking. Students must use these capabilities in engaged arts integration activities. In the Springfield Public Schools' learning model, we also see four important
In the Springfield Public Schools' learning model, we also see four important processes for students to use in order to achieve academic success. The four processes include high expectations, clear goals, positive relationships, and effective feedback.
Using arts integration makes having high expectations easy. When you're happy, students create scripts, songs, and dances. Expectations are automatically set high. When presenting, students want to impress their classmates. Expectations are set high for themselves, for their classmates, for their teachers. In order to achieve high expectations, students must communicate with each other and collaborate to create their product in order to reach their goal.
What? What's the issue? It's just about the ministry. No. Come on, I know you want them. I said no, I told you to keep them. Come on, this is so, this is so hard. I want you to do it. Come on, this is your last shot.
Yes, Anthony?
I think creating the script was hard because I know that when we do something on stage or show people, it looks easy, but using the stop method, we have things of, but how we can include everything in there and how it can be included.
I think that doing this helped the relationship between us because we started out not knowing each other very well, but working together and being able to talk to each other and write a little script really helped us work together and become closer friends. So doing things like this makes us stronger as a school and as friends because you get to know one another, and you're not just standing there by yourself doing work.
And I think one of the things that you can see from that example, and you're going to get to hear another one on their mastery learning, is how the learning model is a framework that can be used by a school to fit the needs and the initiatives that that school has and support it rather than be something that constrains it. And Ms. Wise, would you like to introduce our mastery teaching folks?
All right, I'd like to introduce Wendy Beesmeyer and Kim Taylor, and they're going to go through the mastering, we're doing mastery learning, and share with you about what's happening at Jarrett.
Good evening, board, and thank you for letting me address you. I'm Kim Taylor, and I teach sixth grade at Jarrett Middle School, and I'm very excited to talk to you tonight about mastery learning. And before I begin, I'd like for you to see what the students have to say about it. They said, "It's amazing, and the opportunities are endless. Plus, you feel astonished after you get out because you're telling yourself, 'Wow, this is something I never knew.'" It has helped me understand things when other schools would have just moved on, and I wouldn't get the things I needed to know. It makes me feel like I know more. It allows the teacher to know where I am. It helped me go from Ds and Cs to As and Bs. The students are not the only ones that are in favor of mastery learning. Fred Jones, author of Tools for Teaching, said, "To a frightening degree, systematic skill-building has been replaced by, quote, 'covering the material in American education.' The result is familiarity without mastery." And William Glasser, American psychiatrist and developer of choice theory, says that told that a passing grade is B or competence and that we will help you get there, students do competent work. The lowest passing grade in the real world is competence. So why do schools accept so much less? Well, at Jarrett Middle School, we don't. In effect, we have been piloting the new learning model with mastery this year at Jarrett Middle School. Over the next few minutes, we'd like to show how mastery learning has actually exemplifies each one of the specific pieces of the Springfield Public Schools' learning model. We start by setting clear and specific goals for each and every student. For us, eighty percent is mastery, and every student knows that. We help them reach that goal by providing them with effective feedback. Pretests provide a starting point for our instruction. Formative assessments show students how far they've come and how far they have to go to reach mastery of a concept. And our summative assessments communicate with students, teachers, and their parents whether or not the student has truly mastered that content. Through this model, all stakeholders receive continuous and meaningful feedback. This is how students keep track of their own progress. We do this in math and English language arts. This feedback is the foundation for our person-centered relationships. Students participate in setting goals. Continuous feedback helps teachers, students, and their parents ensure that every student meets their goal. Students are plugged in in ways they've never been before. In fact, one student told us that they felt motivated to pass the test because now they have something to lose. Once they reach mastery, students will then choose what they will explore next in what we call an enrichment class. This choice leads them to a deeper relationship with their peers and an enrichment teacher who all share similar interests with each other. The students are working hard in their core classes for a chance to learn what they choose to learn in this enrichment class. The enrichment class becomes the carrot, not extra recess, not extra credit, and not a piece of candy. This is just a sampling of the many classes that students chose and participated in this school year at Jarrett. I wish I had more time to tell you of the profound effect that these classes have had on our students, what parents are saying about mastery learning, and what students are doing outside of school with the knowledge that they've gained in these enriched classes. However, in order to fit in with our allotted time, let me introduce my colleague, Wendy.
Hello. I'm Wendy Beesmeyer, and I teach English Language Arts at Jarrett Middle School. High expectations are the foundation of mastery learning. We accept nothing less than competency there, and for us, competency begins at eighty percent. Mastery is teachers raising of students and students raising the bar. They're invested in their learning, and they're striving for excellence. We are proud that we leave no child behind. Our strongest students are enriched, and they're stretched beyond their previous reach, while our struggling students receive remediation instruction until they too master the content, and then they are able to participate in enrichment. Every child's needs are met. Because students are engaged, because they are willing and active participants in their learning, they are able to think more critically. Critical thinking begins with teachers choosing power strands that focus on essential skills. The students are able to develop a deeper understanding of the core material, and then through that enrichment class, they apply that deeper knowledge to real-world scenarios. Collaboration and communication are necessary to each element of the learning model. Not only does mastery require collaboration and communication, but it encourages it between students, parents, and teachers. Our students are excited about what they're doing at school, so they go home and they tell their parents about it, sometimes the first voluntary communication about school in a really long time. The parents are thrilled, and they come and they tell us what they're hearing. Everybody benefits. It is for this reason that we all unify in a common goal, and the goal is competency. As you can see, mastery learning and the SPS learning model appear to be very much one in the same. We've shared with you what the students think, we've told you what the experts said, and we've shown you how we've implemented the model. I'd like to show you one slide that demonstrates what we're really proud of, something we think is really impressive. The green bars in the graph demonstrate last year's year-long gains in the three performance assessment series tested areas without mastery. The gold bars demonstrate this year's gains in those three areas over the course of the year with mastery. We think the data speaks for itself. We have seen tremendous gains using the model. Our scores are impressive, but important to us, the students are excited and enthusiastic about learning, and they're confident in the knowledge that they've acquired. We'd like to thank you for letting us speak to you this evening, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Ladies, questions? Mr. Lee?
This may be a loaded question.
Well, the hard part's over.
Yeah. The stress is down now. I mean, it seems very much like we're on a collision course with the whole concept of seat time and Carnegie units. And it seems to me you're helping with that. And I guess my loaded question is, in your thoughts and your experience now, how do we get there and get out of this? And that's a big question, I know. I mean, which is where we need to go to the mastery? I mean, that's what, the competency is where we need to be, not 174 days in a class and seven hours a day. And we need to get out of that. Seems to me what you're doing now is just reinforcing that whole model concept. And I'm just trying to think, how do we, how do we, I don't know, expand it? How do we, where do we go from here, I guess? Maybe it's the best way to phrase that question.
The first challenge that you identified is really related to legislation and regulations. And it's really more applicable at, well, it's applicable to all levels, but it affects our high schools probably more than our middle schools and our elementary schools. And I think it's getting the framework of which we are required as an organization that supports students to realize that we are in the 21st century and that the model of seat time and numbers of days and numbers of hours is really a 19th and 20th century model. And I think by schools like Jarrett Middle School and others demonstrating that when you have the opportunity to have flexibility from some of those regulations and requirements, that you really can see great improvements for students. So I think we have to continue to be a consistent voice and advocate at the state and even the national level that we need some release from some of those requirements.
And I will say that, you know, we started in sixth grade, and now we're going to move it to seventh grade, and we're doing some looping with the teachers also. We're taking, Ms. King's going to go up to seventh grade along with Ms. Jameson, science. So, you know, those are, we're taking kind of baby steps, and we're making sure we get it right as we go.
But is that, I mean, is that progressing? I mean, I think it's a great idea to take the baby steps, but I don't want to go to the ninth grade and then we stop and hit a wall.
One of the things, and they can share with you a little bit more, because of the results they're getting and the enthusiasm that they have and what they're doing for their students, a number of other schools in our school district, middle schools, high schools, and even some elementaries, I believe, have been coming in our schedule to come to visit with the sixth grade team at Jarrett to learn. And that's part of that opportunity to share across the district, which you, as a board, have asked many times wisely, how are we going to share this information across the district if it's a working practice to make sure that other schools and other students in other schools have the benefit of that? So they are doing that.
And they got to share at the P2G conference, which was really nice. We got a lot of feedback, and they sent out a lot of emails to the teachers that were interested in that. And then they also shared at our feeder pattern, Part View feeder pattern, and that was nice to see the alignment from the elementaries up to the high school. And then we've had several schools come over. We've got some today came through, and then tomorrow will come through. So they're giving a lot of their time and effort, and it's really something that we're passionate about, that we see results from. And the most amazing thing to me are the kids, just they're so comfortable and they know that we, it's empowering them as students and that they have trust in us, and that's a really remarkable thing to watch.
Well, certainly the gains in the academic areas are impressive. Have you seen a change in discipline, a change in attendance? Because it seems like if a child feels competent and supported, that that would have an impact on some of the other things.
Absolutely. And the interesting thing that I've seen is, in the enrichment classes, we virtually don't have any discipline problems because the students chose the class. And all you have to do is say, "Did I misread your form? I thought you chose this class." And it's like, "I did, I did." I said, "Okay, just wanted to make sure you wanted to stay. You just weren't behaving like you wanted to stay." And so we're definitely seeing that in those enrichment classes, for sure. And within our regular classes, our regular core classes, these students know they have to pass these tests, and they pretty much peer pressure each other. Today in class, we were reviewing for what we call a spiral test because every quarter we go back and hit what we learned on the first day of school, every quarter. So we spiral around, and we were reviewing today, and there was a couple of kids in the back that were kind of wanting to talk. And I mean, the whole class was turned around, and they were like, "You guys need to be quiet because we have to learn this, we have to pass this test." And so they kind of a little bit put pressure upon each other a little bit because everybody wants to pass. And if you've got a neighbor sitting next to you disturbing you while we're teaching and trying to, and I tell them, I said, "You guys, I'm here to help you. That's what my job is. I'm here to help you pass these tests. If you don't use me in that way, then I'm being ineffective. So you're going to have to, you know, behave in such a way that everybody can learn and everybody can pass because, you know, you might pass, but your neighbor might not be able to. So they need that, you need to respect them so that they can get that, you know, get my attention and that they can learn just like everybody else."
And this is traditionally the most difficult time of day when we have these enrichment classes. It's the very last class of the day, last two classes, after lunch, the end of the day, and they, you know, traditionally can sometimes try to shut down a little bit on you. And what we're finding is they don't. And again, this isn't a graded class. There's no hammer to hit them with, you know, to get things in, and they're choosing some fairly tricky, difficult subjects right now. Kim's teaching a chemistry unit to sixth grade students that chose to be in there. They just, they really take it and they want that knowledge, and it's really nice to see some of those strong students and some that weren't always the strongest but have an interest or a passion, really take that and run with it. And they're so busy learning all this stuff that they don't really have time to get in trouble, and it's just a nice end to the day.
Mr. Hodgman?
I guess I want you to speak to, one of the quotes you said is, "The result is familiarity without mastery," and that's not doing, you know, not making kids master something. And that familiarity without mastery seems to be a definition of MAP, which is, let's brush it by it, let's throw it out to them, and then let's test them in April, and I hope they got it. So my question, and maybe you can speak to this, is how much of an impediment is the focus on MAP to the kind of the, how you develop a curriculum and how you develop, you know, because my, and Saul Kahn at the National School Board Association meeting spoke to this idea of, you know, you teach fractions for a couple of weeks and then you move on. Whether they know it or not, you're gone to the next thing. And so you've got some kids with you, some have just lost everything, and they don't know what they're doing, but they're moving on with you because you've got to get the next one done because MAP's coming up. So can you speak to that? Because I think it's important, but as long as we still have this, and I've talked to Anita about this ad nauseam, as long as we have this, this kind of hammer called MAP over teachers' heads, you can say all you want, "We want you to teach mastery," and they're going to say, "Well, but here's what you're really looking at."
I'll just say a few things, and I'll let these guys fill in a little bit. What they do is they break it down into 10 or 12 power strands, and those are content-based. And it's about an eight-day cycle, and the kids take a pretest, and they teach for five days, and they take a formative, do a power hour, which the kids that master it by then get to go into content-enriched activities, and the other ones go into remedial, and then they take their summative. The neat thing is, if they pass the summative with eighty percent, then that's when they get into their enrichment classes at the end of the day. And we're fortunate with our schedule, with block scheduling, which we still have, one of the few, and it really has worked the benefit of us greatly, is they get immediate remedial, the first 45 minutes is math, and the second is comm arts, and this is every day tutoring, every day, and it's immediate and effective. The kids that do master that get into the enrichment piece of it. And so then the teachers go right on. So we are continuing to move on with our curriculum, but at the same time, we're saying, "But you're going to come back in, and you're going to get remedial." "But you're going to come back in and you're going to get remediated for this specific thing that you're not mastering." And so it allows the kids to move forward, but continue to work on the things. And we do have what we call stackers and they do get a little bit behind. And everybody has them and what do you do with those kids? And we just continue to work and we've almost got them all through. And it's really, if you walk into their rooms, because they've got a CCI board basically up there, it's got the pre, formative, and summative. And so it's a living CCI, environment, atmosphere, classroom, which is really great too. So anything else you guys want to add? And it's really hard to do it without visuals and without walking through it, but we're basically doing a two-direction kind of thing. So we have the going forward through the unit to the next unit. And what's really nice is you really are pounding what you think is really important for them to know. And a lot of times that's based in the GLEs or the core competencies. So we're trying to think ahead and see those as we go forward through those units. But one kind of key thing, we didn't hit it really hard today, is in between those formative and summative tests, we have that power hour. So the kid who gets how to subtract fractions, for example, really has it solidly, you can take them one step further in that day of the plus because they're usually pretty sharp kids who are picking it up fast. Now we can teach them how to subtract with borrowing fractions, which they wouldn't have got before because we were worrying about all of the kids just figuring out how to subtract regular fractions. And then a lot of them are picking up some of that math in that afternoon too. Now, the kids that didn't figure out the fractions at all to begin with, all afternoon, well, not all afternoon, but for 45 minutes every afternoon, they're working with a math certified teacher with remedial instruction, maybe a different way. Oftentimes, a different voice is explaining it to them. And sometimes that's all it takes and they're picking up that material. And, we didn't hit this hard either, at least every quarter, they have to go back and show you they still know how to subtract fractions. We're going to do year-long cumulative tests this week and we are so excited to see how they do because we think they've got it.
Very good. Thank you all very much. It's impressive. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Ritter, your goal is to apply that everywhere by next fall.
It'll be August 15.
Okay. Let's see. We have to do some other things now. We approved the turf last time, so we'll go to actual items for separate consideration. And the Glendale roof is first. I suspect Mr. Wint wants us to spend some money.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Dr. Ritter, it's my pleasure to present this item to you this evening. This is one of several major repair projects that are facilities' goals in keeping our buildings safe, dry, and healthy. And this first item is the Glendale Roof Restoration and Repair. The price for this project was provided through a state contract. It's approximately 41,000 square foot of roofing, which is a, I'm sorry, a 22-year-old section of the roof. With the restoration, they'll provide three expansion joints in this roof as well. It's to be funded through our major repair. It was within the major repair allotment that we have. And the recommendation is that the board issues a contract to Weatherproofing Technologies in the amount of $419,317.20.
Questions from Mr. Wint? A motion from Mrs. Callen and a second from Mr. Lee that the board issue a contract to Weatherproof Technologies, $419,317.20 for Glendale's roof.
I don't have it. Do you see anything open? Everything open. I haven't been doing anything.
You add her verbal vote in, does that work?
I. Sorry.
Do it. Or do I need to do it?
Perfect.
She's got it.
I got you. I'm sorry.
Jarrett. This item is to do the masonry repair, the tuck pointing for Jarrett Middle School. The bids for this project were received from three different contractors. One of the bids was disqualified because they did not provide the DBE form, which is a requirement within the bidding. The bid tabulation form is attached. Esther Lee Schneider was the architect for this project. It is within the major repair budget. And the recommendation is that the board issues a contract to Midcontinental Restoration Company from Fort Scott, Kansas, in the amount of $509,788 for the base bids and alternates one and two.
Questions. Mr. Chodas.
And Midcontinental is out of Kansas, is that right?
That is correct.
And the other bidder is out of, has an office here in Springfield, Missouri?
Yes, sir.
It was then about 5%? Is that right?
That is correct.
Oh, okay.
The questions. Take a motion.
So moved.
Mrs. Callen, seconded by Dr. Frederick, that the board issue a contract to Midcontinental Restoration Company, the amount of $509,788 for the base bid and alternates one and two. Was that a board doc?
Go out of it.
Go out of it and come back in.
Aye.
Good. Thank you. And Pleasant View.
This roof is a replacement roof project for Pleasant View School. This also is through that Cooperative School District contract with the state. It's approximately 14,000 square foot of roof and again, within the allotment in the major repair budget. And it is the recommendation of administration that the board issues a contract to Weatherproofing Technologies in the amount of $175,939.60.
Mr. Lee, and seconded by Mrs. Callen, that the board issue a contract to Waterproof Technologies, $175,939. Mr. Wint, can these be done over summer break? Is that the point of?
That is the plan, to have them finished up by the time school starts, if weather permitting.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. Chodas.
Thank you. If you'll open up the financial statement in board docs, you will see that through April of this year, revenue is at 90% of the budget amount for the year, the same amount we were at last year at this time. I have a much better handle on the revenue as it comes in and I'm fairly comfortable that the year-to-date will come in, or the final amount will come in pretty close to budget. Expenditures are at just under 70% and they were just over 70% this time last year. That's a little bit more of a wild card. It basically depends on whether or not people spend their budgets or not. They're very aware that if they're not going to spend it, I'm going to be looking for it because we have needs elsewhere. For example, fuel, this year we needed an additional $200,000 above the original budget. So that came from elsewhere within the budget. I would also like to point out that if you look under expenditures by function in Board of Education, Dr. Frederick pointed out that, well, she had a question of me and she said, "The budget this year is 921,000. Last year we only spent 500,000. What's causing the increase?" I did a little bit of research and what happened there is we received an overpayment from DESI on some revenue. Personally, I would have thought we should record it as a credit against, or a reduction of the revenue, but no, DESI wants us to record it as an increase in expense. Doesn't make sense to me, but that's what they said. So we did that. And that's also the, it includes the 180,000 for the state audit as well. Fund balance, you can see last year at this time, we were sitting at, just at 66 million and by the time we get to the end of the year, it drops dramatically. A big part of that decrease is the July and August payrolls for teachers that are earned prior to June 30, so we accrue them back into June even though we don't pay them out until July or August. I would like to touch briefly on next year's revenue, but does the board want to approve this first and then I'll?
Yes, we should. Any questions on the treasurer's report? Ms. Callen.
Based on what you said, you said it's kind of a wild card because you don't know what portion of people's budget is going to be spent. Is there ever any effort to look at maybe areas where it's, they spent 60% versus, you know?
Oh, my goodness. It's the bulk of my time this time, this year.
And so you're kind of?
I can all attest that I am.
It's pretty tight.
So you're going to those budget heads and saying, you know, what do you anticipate spending?
Right.
What's still out there that's going to be spent, but what may not be?
Right. Yes.
I think sometimes when, I don't want to leave the impression that we have people that just are just trying to spend a budget to justify it.
No.
I think that's kind of how it came across, so I just wanted to make sure that that's not the case.
That is not the case.
Other questions? I take a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Mrs. Callen, seconded by Mr. Lee.
Okay.
Go ahead with.
Obviously, we are in the midst of developing the budget for next year. The first thing we need to look at is revenue for next year. I just thought I'd go through briefly with the board what the current situation is. Property taxes, we anticipate being up about $2 million. I know that sounds like a large amount of money, but that increases not near what it's been historically. Prior taxes, we anticipating being up just shy of $1 million. You know, we now have two years of higher than historical amounts in the delinquent properties and, you know, we're going to be a little aggressive and assume that that trend will continue. M&amp;M surcharge, we're anticipating that that's going to be up about $1.4 million, excuse me, $1.5 million. I'm not going to go through every line item, just touch on the larger ones. State funding, at this time, we're anticipating that it will be the same as what we received this year, barring any news to the contrary. So when all is said and done, we're looking at a revenue increase of about $5.5 million over the current year's budget. It's unfortunate that at a time where enrollment is continuing to increase, that really our only revenue source that's impacted by enrollment, which is the state formula, you know, we're not seeing that growth. And what it does is it applies more pressure on local funding, such as property taxes and sales taxes. I don't want to go into a lot of detail on the expenditure side at this time. I will tell the board that initial requests came in and, you know, they're over $9 million in comparison to that $5.5 million increase. We are heavily into the process that we told the board that we would be going through to identify those budget requests that will move forward. You know, we have a lot of needs. You know, I mentioned the fuel increase, we're going to have to look at that, textbook of options and other need, class size, et cetera. So we have a lot of needs there.
Questions for Mr. Chodas. Ms. Callen.
So we are fairly confident, I mean, as confident as we can be until the legislative session is over, that our funding from the state will be at a flat level. Is that right?
That is the indication that we've received at this time. You know, I know the legislature is probably not going to make a decision on it, that'll kick it back to DESI. That is the approach DESI used last year. I don't anticipate there being a long delay. I assume DESI's already seen the writing on the wall and probably already has a decision made, they just have not gone public with it at this time.
So really, as I understand it, our elected officials, who are elected at a state level to make those kinds of decisions, fiscal decisions for the state of Missouri, they are transferring that responsibility to a state agency? Is that?
Well, they did last year and it, I can, I mean, legislative session is not over yet, so, you know, they could do that. But the indication is, I guess I'd say if I was a betting person, I'd say they're going to do the same thing this year as they did last year and let DESI make that decision. They have made a decision on the dollar amount, the total dollar amount for education, just not on how it's allocated.
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, this is just a statement. That's very disappointing to me as another elected official in the state of Missouri that people who are charged with that responsibility for their constituents can't put away the ideology of their different political parties and find a solution for what's best for the state of Missouri. It's disappointing. It's relinquishing the responsibility that they have to the people who elected them. And I really think that we need to hold them accountable for that. And, you know, we're in this partnership together. We get federal money, we get state money. Unfortunately for the students of Springfield, we get the majority of our money from our community. Because if we weren't in that position, we would be in serious trouble. And it just makes me realize how important it is to continue to let our citizens know, our citizens of Springfield, that the schools we have, the quality of teaching staff we have, the kinds of buildings we have, the kinds of programs we have, the kinds of things that we saw here tonight that have brought state and federal and national recognition to a variety of different programs, really is going to rely on us more and more. And, you know, it just, it's frustrating, it's disappointing, but at some level, it's kind of empowering because it's like, okay, let's do this. And, you know, shame on them.
The real imbalance that we're experiencing is the held harmless versus those that are not held harmless. And the more that's pushed out, the more we are feeling the pain and they're not. And so the held harmless basically are fine with it. In fact, they celebrate it. And so I do anticipate, I shouldn't say it too loud, but I do anticipate some kind of legal action if this continues.
Well, we've been trying that for the last decade. There's been legal action to try to resolve this.
Yeah, but this is getting pretty serious.
Right. But I'm just, I'm saying, it pits district against district.
That's what it does.
Children against children. And, you know, depending on where you live in this state, more than maybe any other state, depends on the kind of support you get back from the state. And it's not fair.
And we've continued to say that local control is important to us in terms of curriculum, in terms of governance, and I think our community understands that. And I think that we're going to be saying more and more, local control is important in terms of finances.
Yep.
And let our community step up because I know they will. Any other questions for Mr. Chodas? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have several routine action items that we can approve as submitted. We have several routine action items that we can approve as submitted. Moved by Mrs. Callen, seconded by Mrs. Twitty, that we approve the routine action items as submitted. And you've seen the general consent items listed on Board Docs. We can approve those as submitted by the administration in the general consent item list. Mrs. Twitty, seconded by?
I am. Oh, she just didn't have my, oh, sorry.
Yeah. And, and Dr. Frederick seconded the general consent items.
I did.
She was the first to speak. Not to put words in your mouth. Mrs. Twitty, and seconded by Dr. Frederick. Very much. You can see the information items that we discussed at the last board meeting. I don't believe we have any other public comments. Legislative report. Who wants to start? Anything cooking, Mr. Lee?
I can go ahead and start.
Okay, Dr. Ritter.
Yeah, I was on the phone with Charlie Dennison today. Charlie does a good job of calling to find out which way to vote, most of the time. But anyway, the bill, the charter bill is still getting pushed back on, on the plate all the time. And, and so my sense is that there's, it is getting some traction. However, if, if, if the charter doesn't report to the district board, I don't think it'll pass. But, so I think they're going to make that kind of adjustment. We'll see what happens with it.
For unaccredited districts.
For unaccredited districts, yes.
And they did include quite a bit of accountability provisions in there so that it'll be somewhat on a level playing, much better than it used to be as far as. Better than it was.
The teacher tenure is, is on the Senate floor, I believe, and being discussed. And so I'm anxious to see where that's going to go. Other than that, waiting to see what's going to happen with the funding formula, with the funding. So.
And the bill's still out there for the board.
Oh, yes.
Changing the Springfield Board Elections. It's still hovering around in the, in the House. They keep throwing it on non-related education bills, or non-related bills that have nothing to do with education, trying to get it through. So just got to be diligent to watch. Sure it doesn't.
Talking to Charlie, not about that, but he says that's happening all over the place. You got to watch it like.
Last, the last week is.
Lot of stuff's coming off all over the place, so.
Mr. Chodas.
I see a tweet here that says, "The House passes Senate Charter Schools' Expansion Accountability Bill, ninety-nine to fifty-four. Bill goes to the governor."
Charter bill.
Charter bill. What will the governor do?
It was in the Senate.
No, is he going to sign it?
Oh.
Senate.
So Senate passed it?
So it goes to the governor.
And have we heard any feedback as to?
I have not heard.
I don't know what the content is. Check that.
Yeah, I haven't, I don't know what is said today, so I haven't.
Can I ask a question on the, the content of the bill that's trying to change the configuration specifically of one of five hundred and twenty-three school districts in the state, and that's Springfield? And that was sponsored by one of our local representatives, right? And that's Representative Leach? Do we know how our other local reps and Senator, how they are going to vote on that bill?
They're opposed to it.
Every one of them?
Every one of them.
Dixon's bill originally, so I'm assuming he's in favor of it.
No, he isn't.
It was his bill originally.
Last year.
That was last year, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
He didn't like it anymore?
I don't know today.
Again, I think these are the kinds of things that our local patrons who support this district in many, many ways need to know. You know, at, at one level, the state legislature won't act on the important things that they've been charged to do. And then, on the other hand, they find frivolous ways to put forth, you know, really, an issue that should be, again, at the local level and trying to legislate how one district in this entire state, how they configure their school board, their local school board. Again, it's, we need to let people know. And I don't think that that has been out in the media as much as it needs to be. I don't think the local legislator who's supporting that legislation has been asked why and who is behind it. And I think our other local legislators need to be asked why they don't support it. And again, it's one of those things that I think they're just wanting it to kind of be under the radar screen and get passed. And we need to have it out there.
I mean, it's a bad bill by itself. It's a bad bill as an amendment, so. Hopefully, our delegation will step up and, and.
What bill number is it? What bill number is it so if patrons wanted to call, they could?
I couldn't tell you what.
I mean, it's, I mean, it keeps jumping around, right?
Yeah, it was in the government, it's in a government bill now.
I'm not sure.
We can get that information.
We can get it.
Maybe our friends in the media could help and get that out and let people at least know, I mean, not take a stand, but at least let people know what bill it is.
We'll find out the information and get it out there. Thank you. I think there's pretty good consensus on that. Mr. Lee?
Just for a point of information. DESI got back response to the waiver, for the NCLB waiver, which it wasn't approved. I don't say it wasn't approved, that's the wrong way to do it. It came back with a whole lot of comments and questions, so. And they gave him two weeks to respond, which was, I mean, that, but they said, hey, if you need more time, it's okay. But most of it centered around accountability. And so, and we weren't alone. I don't know of any of the states that actually got approved to this round. I mean, they had to review twenty-six different proposals. And so we're going to end up with fifty different accountability systems in the, in this country because of the waiver process. But Missouri did get notice back, and so I know DESI is working with Department of Education trying to resolve the differences, or at least the comments that they had with the waiver. And hopefully, that will get resolved. I don't know how much input stakeholders in the state will have with respect to any of the, any new stuff that's going in. I know there was a lot of discussion on accountability with respect to Title I was one of the big issues that, that they were real concerned about. With MSIP, that was one of the things that we probably didn't do a good enough job explaining what our MSIP is in, in the state. Most states don't have that, and the feds didn't understand that concept. So hopefully, some education will occur between the two, and then we can move forward and get out of this NCLB problem for 2014. So I know DESI's working on it, the commissioner's met with DOE. And so I suspect it'll get resolved. But there's a lot of hoops and hurdles to be jumped over between now and when it gets done. I can't imagine it being done by this accountability reporting period in July. So I, you know, I would anticipate we'll get, this coming July, when the MAP test comes back, it won't, as it's always going to be, it's going to look worse. But we won't be the only one, but.
Well, they submitted a very sterile application so that they didn't commit to something that they were going to have to commit to. And, and so I think they were expecting some kind of feedback, so I do think that.
They had two approaches to go, put the kitchen sink in it, or keep it very generic and sterile like that. And, and they took that approach. And now they've got the feedback, and hopefully, they can go back and address the feedback and make it work. So I'm optimistic about it, but it's not going to be as quick as we had hoped.
Any other issues we need to discuss? Operations report is listed, please do your plus deltas. We do need an executive session tonight, so I would take a motion.
Well, we, we got one thing.
I thought you were talking about legislative. I do have one thing.
Okay.
Under other, or future, whatever you want to be, I'm not sure. June fifteenth and sixteenth is the MSBA Leadership Summit, of which we will be presenting one of the sessions on governance. And that is a presentation by the board.
Two hours long?
An hour and a half. You get an hour and a half.
Oh, yes, okay.
So, you know, hopefully, that, that we'll have board representation up there making the presentation on the fifteenth, it's on the fifteenth. And I'm not sure if it's in the morning or afternoon.
Yeah, as soon as you get the time.
They didn't give us that yet.
Well, the other thing, isn't it that evening, Jerry, that you get sworn in as, or whatever? Sworn in as a MSBA president? So I think it would be nice to have as much representation as possible, so.
We may also be honoring somebody at that meeting.
Well, let's get ASAP the times.
Yeah, I'll get that date. But it would be nice to have as many board members there as possible since it's based on the outstanding Board of Education from last year that we won on governance and leadership, and so.
In Jeff City, Columbia?
Columbia, at the Holiday Inn in Columbia.
Thank you.
Should be good.
Any other, any other, other issues? Okay. Now, executive session, we need to meet to discuss legal and personnel matters as provided in section six-ten, oh-twenty-one, one-three, and thirteen RSMO. I would take a motion. Dr. Frederick, and a second from?
Second.
Mr. Lee. Thank you very much.